Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will be led tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Rakowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. There are no special announcements and presentations this evening, so we will now begin with citizens' comments on the agenda. All citizens wishing to speak on the agenda shall do so at the beginning of the meeting and address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your Westland City Council. Is there anyone on my left items on the agenda? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the... Yes, Mr. Warren?
Yes, good evening, everyone. On the new business, item five. I'm just trying to figure out how is the issue with me, how is less more? If we move to the special pickup or bulk, as they call it, to a two-week thing along with recycling, how is that... How are we getting more for less? In other words, what's wrong with the daily, weekly pickup of bulk items? And are we saving any money in regards to that? Because just recently, quickly recently, you know, we saw in the news that Priority Waste Management was having serious problems in picking up refuge in certain communities. And I want to know that if we enter this, if we want to enter into a three-year period with Priority, how's it going to be better than historically with what they've done with other communities? And how is this community going to profit from it? But the main thing is that the question of moving to a two-week period, because I know there are going to be a lot of mattresses out there if you miss over a two-week period. Also, number six, seven, and eight, in regards to these generators, I just need some clarity. I was in the study session in regards to the generators, okay? But what will happen with the old generator that's out here and in regards to the fire stations or wherever you're going to put it? And just need some clarity on that, because we're talking about nearly a million dollars of expenditures in regards to these generators and how that would be an improvement for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the agenda? Anyone else in the audience? Seeing and hearing none, we will close citizens' comments and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Support.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
No.
Any changes? Yes, pro tem.
Thank you, Council President. I consent calendar item E. I would like to move that to 1A so I can provide some discussion about the event.
There's a motion to move consent calendar item E to new business item 1A. Is there support?
Support.
There is supported by Councilman Wishart. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now back...
E will be 1A.
Now back to the consent calendar. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Any other changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, consent calendar passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items: minutes of the regular meeting held September 3, 2024; approval of request from Lutheran High School 33300 Cowan Road to conduct their annual homecoming parade on October 4, 2024 at 5:30 PM, beginning at the back of the school, proceeding south on Farmington, west on Cowan, then turning right into the high school parking lot. This request includes seeking assistance from the police department to block traffic during the parade; approval of request from Wayne County Parks to hold a 15-minute fireworks display at the Wayne County Light Fest opening on November 21, 2024, at about 6:15 PM at the Merriman Hollow picnic area in Heinz Park, located at Merriman Road and Heinz Drive; and to build a bonfire for the Bike Through the Lights Light Fest run November 19... I'm sorry, in the Light Fest run on November 20; and finally, the Light Fest grant opening on November 21, 2024; approval of purchase of 11 laptops for the police department in the amount of $13,039.73. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of resolution declaring the second Monday in October each year as both Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day in the city of Westland, beginning October 14, 2024, moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
Some of.
Support.
There's a motion by Pro Tem Sampi, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
Moving to new business, item one, minutes of the closed study session held September 9, 2024.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Obstand at entrance.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Standing due to funeral.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 1A. Allow me a moment here. Approval of request from Relay for Life to waive the administrative fees to host their 2025 kickoff Pizza Palooza fundraiser on November 12, 2024, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at City Hall. The rental fee would be waived, and it is a $350 for nonprofit package deal.
Some of.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Okay. Pro tem, I know you had discussion.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to just put a little bit of light to this. Usually Miriam Katie is here to plug the event, so I just wanted to have the opportunity to do that. So this is, it says on here, host their 2025 kickoff, but it should be... Oh, I guess it would be for next year. Okay, okay. I read that wrong. So it's taking place Tuesday, November 12, from 5 to 8. If you've not been to the Pizza Palooza, it is a fantastic event. Last year, we had a overflow for anyone that attended. I know many of my colleagues did. It was probably 200 to 300 people that were here. We had to pull in tables, open up rooms, and it's just a way for us to gather together. They have a quarter raffle auction game, which is fantastic. So those that are interested, you can bring your quarters, and it allows you some sticks that are pulled out. Your number matches, then you get raffle prizes. So if anyone is interested in supporting this event, I would encourage you to reach out to the Western Wayne Relay for Life team. Miriam Katie, Rhonda, Kathy, I mean, everyone at the Relay for Life team does a fantastic job. They raise funds all year long, so this is part of one of their bigger fundraisers, and it's family-friendly. So I know that they are always looking for pizza vendors. They're looking for raffle prizes. And again, the funds do directly support the Relay for Life. So I wanted to just plug this. Obviously, I'm in support of this. I was hoping that Miriam could be here, but I wanted to give the opportunity just for one more plug, because this is such a worthy cause, and many of us know people that are affected by cancer. So thank you, Council President, for allowing me to speak on this.
Absolutely, of course. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item two, request for city council to enter into a closed study session immediately to discuss a possible settlement of the workers' compensation claim number C2321901111 per MCL 15.26E.
Some of.
Support.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
At 7:11 PM, motion passes unanimously. Item three, return to open meeting.
Some of.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
We are back in session unanimously at 7:34 PM. New business, item four, approval to authorize a settlement in claim number C2321901111.
Some of.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the court?
No comment.
No comment. You're right. Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item five, approval of contract amendment with Priority Waste LLC to amend the existing municipal solid waste recycling and compost collection and disposal for an additional three-year period ending December 31, 2033. The amount budgeted $435,000.
Is there a motion?
Some of.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Wishart. Before we get to council comments, I want to bring up Paul Ruthenberg from Priority Waste, who's going to present to us, and then we will take questions from the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Hope everybody's doing well. Again, I'm Paul Ruthenberg with Priority Waste. Really excited about this special pickup program that we're trying to get off the ground here in Westland. Historically, very quick history. It began in 2015 due to budgetary restraints with the city of Westland, and we've been trying to work ourselves into more of a normal flow of bulk collection for the residents of the city of Westland. Normal flow would mean no longer the need to call 48 hours in advance for a special pickup. I can honestly tell you that when I started this special pickup program in 2015, there were two ways to present a special pickup. There are now about seven. Not all of them get to us. I believe everyone up here has called me at one time or another about a special pickup. In short, six to seven out of every 10 complaints that we're receiving in the city of Westland are special pickup related. So just very quickly, the program allows the residents every other week on their recycling week to put the bulk items out for collection. It's the same guidelines that we've always had, okay? They can do two bulk, two bags, or eight full bags. It fundamentally is the exact same bulk pickup program, but now no longer the need to call. Residents will simply put it out, separated from your garbage and recycling can, please, and we will be routing the necessary equipment to just drive through the routes and pick it up as we go. One very quick thing, the additional three years at the end of the contract is really a very nice addition to this amendment, because Westland right now, to my knowledge, is enjoying the lowest rate of ever, any community that I can even think of, at $9.95 per unit, per home, okay? In 2030, that number will be a little bit shorter, $12 per unit, per home. With the 3% increase, you're talking about historically having low figures, very low, for the community and its rubbish hauling needs. With that, I'll just answer any questions.
Mr. Hart.
Oh, thank you, Council President. How you doing, Paul?
Good, Jim. Thank you.
Good, good, good. I remember in 2020, I believe, we put this contract together, and if, gosh, I mean, one colleague maybe remembers, when we started doing this, what we talked about, and we did this with a couple things. We did this with our IT, or excuse me, our telecommunications services, and we started growing beyond the three and five here. And I talked about, as a municipality, we should look at 10-year contracts. And at first, everybody was really concerned about that, but what we found is 10-year contracts with an annual escalator that's marginal between 2% to 4% will always net us under the actual margin to where we're moving forward. So we've been doing well with this. We've been doing well in this contract. We've been doing well in the other 10-year contracts that we have gotten into, so that the opportunity for us to actually add three more years under the same contract terms or the same escalator is actually a very good financial decision in my mind. I would encourage my council to support it, or my colleagues to support that. In addition, I think we talked about kind of the struggles we've had with bulk pickup. So if the bulk pickup happens every two weeks, the residents will be on that schedule. They'll know every two weeks you can put your bulk items out. As Paul has stated, it follows the same bulk pickup items that we've had ever since we started, so people are familiar and accustomed with that, and it stops the phone calls. Paul, my one question for you. You know, this comes up, and I guess everything's an ICB. What I worry about is the one thing that the call ahead did is kind of control abuse, okay? What's our control for abuse? I know it's not popular, only pick up two items and leave the rest of everything there. Is that something that if, an eviction, for lack of a better word, which we've seen, okay, a lot of stuff out the curb, what happens then? What's the next? I'm just curious. What's the next step for that kind of thing?
Thanks for that. Items that we cannot collect, for whatever reason, are stickered. But I should also point out that with the city of Westland, we have a very good relationship with Neighborhood Services. Our drivers commonly will take a photo of abuse. We will send that over to Neighborhood Services within 10 minutes. We hear an answer back that they're going to look at it, or what they want us to do with that. So it's been excellent in Westland when it's abused.
So historically, Neighborhood Services kind of has the final say on what your direction is for that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I'm comfortable with that. I will say again to my colleagues, I would encourage you to support this. I think it makes good financial sense based off of what we've seen for 10-year contracts and our ability to go ahead and buy down and keep our pricing in place with only, you know, marginal escalators in place. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Good evening, Paul. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Anna.
I have two questions, Council President. The first would be, could you please repeat what the bulk item protocol, not the every two weeks, but what can a resident put out at the curbside?
You know, it's your... Thank you, Councilwoman. It's your typical refrigerator with the doors off, stoves, chairs, couches, mattresses, the normal things that everybody finds within their house.
And earlier, you quantified that as like two items. Can you repeat that?
Yes. That was an example. There's two bulk items, or you could put out two bulk items in two bags, or you could put out eight bags total.
Eight bags.
And that's already on your website.
I just wanted to have it, you know,
Repeat it.
Said verbally once more, because people, you know, as Councilman Hart mentioned, you know, they abuse it or what have you. So now it's, everybody's aware of how much you can put out at the curb. My follow-up to this is putting aside all the trials and tribulations that we've had with our waste pickup and, you know, our recycling and that. Last year, we did an experiment, I would say, with our bulk leaf pickup, and, you know, I believe that to be discontinued. Is that correct?
That would be for me to say, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I know that we were trying to work with Priority in the past for that, so I just wanted to see if that was something that wasn't going to be occurring. And if you don't have that information, that's perfectly fine.
Priority Waste will only do what it does well, and bulk pickup, bulk leaf pickup is not one of them.
Well, that's good. To be like, you know,
Yeah.
Masters of one, not a jack of all trades. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's up?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro Tem Sampi.
Thank you. So I have some questions for you, Paul. I'll get to the administration, and I'll ask my questions. So it looks like item number five, the amount is $435,000. So through the chair to Director Smith, this is actually being replaced. The funds, what we would have used for leaf pickup are actually now being covered of what we're looking at here for the $435.00. Is that correct?
Through the Council President, so the... The cost of $435,000, if you remember, the leaf pickup program was about half a million, a little over half a million. So this would have replaced the leaf pickup program.
Okay, so we're not quite at what we were paying for leaf, the leaf bulk, leaf pickup then? We're a little bit under?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I am supporting this. You know, I'm kind of sad to see the leaf, which has nothing to do with you, Paul, but the leaf program go away. I know a lot of our veterans and people that needed help, they really appreciated it. You know, I think this is going to be a service. You and I have talked, Paul, and I think the biggest thing or biggest concern, and I know that you feel this too, is the scope and the depth of the project. So maybe if you want to talk a little bit more about how you guys are going to be possibly staffing up, or any new equipment that you guys plan to purchase just to make this process go easier?
Thank you. Yes, we will be adding two pieces of equipment, okay? By effectively doing it every other week, you cut the city of Westland in half. So we would simply take those two pieces of equipment and route them effectively to drive through each and every street in the city every other week and collect the bulk. It's a relatively simple program, and as I said, one that I've been excited about for a while.
Gotcha. Perfect. Now, do you do this type of program in other municipalities? If so, how's it going?
Yes, we pick up bulk the traditional way, which is we go around with trucks and pick up any bulk that the residents put out. We do that, I can tell you, in Canton Township, now Livonia, Redford, Dearborn Heights, let's just say pretty much every community other than Westland.
Okay, so based on municipality contact, you're on an every-two-week basis in the bulk pickup program?
In some of the communities, they were bid out for weekly bulk with that correction, yes.
Oh, they do weekly?
They were bid out for weekly bulk.
Okay. So you'll let us know how every two weeks is going. I know we had a resident concern of mattresses hanging out, and that is a concern of mine, too. People forget sometimes even recycling, right? I mean, I've seen individuals put out their recycling containers, and it happens. So I guess knowing that as a potential, you'll inform Neighborhood Services and then also the administration if you're seeing that people are not getting the message on what week is our bulk pickup.
And to your point, Councilwoman, thank you. That's a great question. It is common for Neighborhood Services to contact me and say, hey, listen, there's two mattresses over here. It's been there. Can you get them out of here? Okay, that's relatively commonplace.
Sure.
And again, that's just a fantastic working relationship with Neighborhood Services. It goes very smoothly.
That's great. Perfect. Yeah, I don't have a concern about this. I think my biggest concern is just making sure that the city does a comprehensive communication plan to really educate our residents. So, you know, we'll definitely work with the administration on making sure that they have a plan in place, items, education, weeks, reminders, and so on and so forth. It's going to probably, at the start, have some growing pains, and I'm sure, like you said, it's just education, and for us, it's every two weeks. Other communities are every week. So I look forward to seeing how it goes. I know that you guys have your work cut out for you, so...
It's going to go great.
I think it will. Yeah, I do think it will. So I hope that you'll come back or communicate with us, or let any of the council members know if you're kind of getting some miscommunication with our residents, so...
Absolutely will. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Baumann.
So the first question, I think, might be through the chair, I'm not sure to who, is what does the education look like for the residents? What are we doing for that? Because I know that every two weeks is, I would say, there was raised a concern that that, you know, is, are we actually getting more, or are we getting less if we're, you know, changing that? So what does the education look like?
Director Smith, if you want to.
Through the chair. Through the chair, the education's going to start by sending the residents a letter explaining the program in detail about what they can put out, what they can't put out, when they can put it out. So that's going to be the biggest part of the education. Also, it'll be on the website, the same information will be there. Obviously, we're going to train the staff to take phone calls if there are phone calls. So, and within the water bill, I do believe there's, you know, a spot to put that in there too. So, that would be the education to start with. I don't know if Jim wants to add anything to that.
Just that we're also planning on doing some social media posts, aside from the letters going out and the information on the city website itself, there'll be some educational notices put out on the social media channels.
It'll also be on our website, as well as our social media.
Do we know if the other, every two weeks is going to be timed with the recycle or the opposite week?
It's going to be with recycling.
With recycling, okay. And then, the last question I had actually was, and I did already speak to Director Smith about this, but I did want to make mention of it, because if you've seen the packet, there is a typo on one of, on the extension of municipal solid waste, and I think he's just, I think Director Smith is going to take care of it. It actually says 2023 instead of 2032. So, just for reference of that.
Thank you.
I think that's...
Okay. Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Press, Council President. You know, Paul, one of those things, sometimes you sit here and you listen to everybody else talk, another idea pops in your head, or a thought, or a question.
I'm guilty of that.
My question was this, and I just didn't think about it till now. We're going to do this on the recycle weeks, yeah?
Yes.
So that means on recycle weeks, I get three trucks down my street?
Yes.
And on non-recycle weeks, I get one? Just curious, what the thought process was instead of doing it?
Actually, no. If you look at, if you looked at any special pickup list, which normally runs around 150 per day, okay? We're driving down pretty much something on every street anyway.
Let's back that up. Is there, is there an advantage to having the bulk pickup in the same weeks in the same neighborhoods as recycling, or doing it in opposite weeks? Because I know this question's going to come from residents soon as I leave here today. You know, why didn't we do it on the other weeks? So I'm just curious, what was the thought process of doing recycle this week and bulk pickup instead of recycling this week, bulk pickup, recycling, bulk? I'm just curious.
And I've got to, I've got to thank you, Jim. That question has been in my head as well, previously, because I struggle with that. Also, like room on the curb, okay? There's not recycling standing there.
That was part two.
So, that came into mind, but I honestly thought that it may add to confusion. We do get some confusion to this day where if one person on a block puts a recycling bin out on the wrong week, well, everybody else thinks it's recycling week on that block.
I've seen that.
Okay? So, the confusion over the bulk, I, you know, you have one calendar that's highlighted for recycling.
Okay.
Now you're going to have another calendar for special. I just thought that it would get too confusing.
And, you know, Paul, I'll tell you this, you've been doing it awful longer than I have, and I've been doing it zero days. You know, I haven't been a trash man, for lack of a better word, and I know you take that to heart, and you appreciate that title. So I defer to your professionalism, I just wanted to ask the question, and my follow-up is, I don't think it's a big deal if we decide we wanted to flip them.
If we decided we wanted what?
If we decided for some reason that we wanted to do bulk pickup on the opposite.
At some point, yeah. It makes no difference, other than the education component.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you, Council President.
Yes, you're welcome. Councilman, Councilwoman Ballmer.
Sorry, one last question. Since it's no longer being, I'm thinking about if I had a bulk pickup on, and I put it out on Sunday, I can call or do it, and it would be gone that week, general, what it used to be, I could go there. Now, it's the every-two weeks. Is there an opportunity at all, and I don't know if I can hear, where, that if there was an extraordinary situation, someone could get something sooner, or is the risk that it could sit out there longer?
Extraordinary situations, absolutely, okay? I think that anybody who's known me for any amount of time knows that I like to present a kind company. And there's been plenty of extraordinary circumstances where I myself or the companies come to bat. So, and usually, again, it goes through Neighborhood Services, and that's one of those things, folks, it's not broke, don't fix it. It works great.
All set? So, I had a question for you, Paul, actually, a couple of them. So when there is, by chance, a missed pickup, who is the best point of contact for our residents to reach out to? What is easiest for your team at Priority?
The easiest way, if there's, should there be a missed pickup, is simply contact Priority Waste, 586-228-1200. Ask for your Westland Lead Driver Coordinator, or LDC. That's the easiest way. Now, with the addition of the other communities that we've taken on, we have had a little bit longer call center waits, but it is rapidly coming under control.
And that kind of leads me to my next question, which, you know, all of our residents have watched the news or read things in the New Register or the Free Press, where, you know, you guys took over accounts from GFL in most all municipalities across Southeast Michigan, and it hasn't always been the smoothest transition. And, you know, we went through a period of time here where we had some bumps in the road, to say the least, as well. It is my understanding that there is a dedicated Westland account that Priority has for us, and that Westland, people who work on the Westland account will not be farmed out to other communities to try and help catch up in Dearborn Heights, let's say, for example, or somewhere else.
Her name is Catherine. Last time I talked to Catherine was 5:30. She's very dedicated, she's excellent. Every communication that comes from your DPW to Catherine is answered by Catherine, or myself, depending on the situation. But it works very well. But I do want the Westland residents to ask for their Westland LDC Lead Driver Coordinator, because that's what's going to get them off the phone the quickest.
Great. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? You're going to sing that, motion passes. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out.
I'm really excited, thank you so much.
Thanks, Paul.
New business, item six, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of America, American Rescue Plan Act funds for the City Hall generator project in an amount not to exceed $650,000.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there discussion from the maker?
Thank you, Council President.
Yes.
So, there've been some questions, one, this is one of the things that came up. This is initiative I worked with, with the ARPA Subcommittee, and with your permission?
Please.
Very good. So, here at the City Hall, we do have a generator. It is a 400 KVA Kohler diesel generator, in excess of 20 years old. Part of my background and history is I'm a telecommunications IT, but I'm also a data center power management person. I understand emergency critical services, and I understand what it takes to make those run. And I realize that we kind of had a little bit of an opportunity here, and when I say an opportunity, we kind of have a threat, you know, if you do your SWOT analysis. This is a threat. So, you know, our weakness is that this generator is old, it's aged, and I remember a couple of years ago, it didn't fire up, okay, when we had a power outage. And that's critical. And it's critical for a number of different reasons. Here at City Hall, this is the backbone of our entire city operation, okay? Yes, our administration's here, yes, they're on their computers all day long, there's a couple other things going on here, and it kind of ties into item eight, which will come up in a little bit. This is also our central core for our entire IT infrastructure system and our internet service provider. We have what's known as a hub-and-spoke design through our internet service provider. All of our internet comes here into the City Hall. All of our outbuildings are fed outwards from here. So every one of our outbuildings comes back here to City Hall, and they're fed through their internet service provider here. So that means if this building loses power, every last building that we have internet services goes down. All right? This is a standard kind of configuration, it's nothing abnormal, but what it means is now we have to treat this center as an EOC for a number of different reasons. And what's an EOC? Well, it's an emergency operations center. All right, so our City Hall is here to, A, provide critical infrastructure services and needs to our community, and that is heat during ice storms when we lose power. That is cooling to our community if we have a big storm that comes through in the summer and people need to cool off, this is a cooling center. That provides our critical IT infrastructure and everything that we need to go ahead and be able to feed and support all of our outbuildings, as well as operations here. This building cannot, under any circumstances, lose power and lose operation. It has a horrible ripple effect to the entire rest of the city operation. So our generator, being old, okay, and our generator only having one, causes a problem. So, using data center technology and data center power backup and emergency power generation, you know, principles and best practices, is I have petitioned the ARPA Subcommittee, as well as talked to members of the administration, we need to have what's called a redundant generator system. And that is a system to where there are two generators here, and they operate in parallel. They operate in parallel, that means if power goes out, both generators come on. They're parallel through a centralized cabinet, and it powers the building, okay? Empowers everything. And that means is they load share. If one generator fails, the other generator's big enough to handle the whole load, we repair the other generator, and get a backup. We cannot lose power. There's a couple other things with this building that we kind of came through and discovered, all right? And that is, there's kind of two different power systems here. And this is kind of a legacy left over from the old, if you guys don't know, this is the old Circuit City. And Circuit City felt differently about power than what I think we need to look at power these days. We need to tie everything into a centralized system, a centralized transfer switch, and a centralized backup power configuration. Because right now, we have two generators out back. Yes, we do. One generator does one job, and one generator does another job. We need to make sure that both generators are tied together, empower everything altogether in load share, so that it's all tied into one system. We can't afford to lose our IT infrastructure, we can't afford to lose our backup, we can't afford to lose our ability to do business and provide a service to the residents, and we cannot lose the ability to provide shelter, heat and cooling to residents during a national disaster, or a lack thereof, or anything similar thereof. So this is something I've been working on, these, the $650,000 kind of budgetary, yes, paralleling generator systems are expensive. But I would say that the risk that we run by not having it during the middle of an ice storm is far worse. And I would like to future-proof our city and make sure that we have the means and the ability here within City Hall to be able to always be open, have the lights on, and ready for business for our residents. So, I moved this forward with the support of the Subcommittee, and I urge my colleagues to go and support it so we can get started, because out of the $650,000, it also funds some of the engineering work that we have to do to be able to go ahead and design this system fully. I am not an electrical engineer, I don't play one on TV, but I know enough to be dangerous, but not enough to go and put my signature on the construction drawings. So we need to get that started, and this is how we start that process. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion from the council? Councilman, did you have?
Jim, you did a really great job. Can you just highlight what's going to happen with the old generator? Thank you.
So, thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. So there's discussion about the old generator. So we have an old diesel Kohler 400, and we also have a natural gas Generac, all right? Nothing's wrong with the Generac, but it's undersized to support the whole load. So we're in discussion right now, okay? We have to go through our engineering steps, but we think that natural gas Generac that we have here currently would be best served going to the new fire station, too. That will offset our costs at the new fire station and be able to transport that over. And if we're, if we're quick, and we are Johnny-on-the-spot with getting this done, I think that we can go in and facilitate that transfer of that other generator. That also leaves, to go a little bit further, that leaves the diesel as a backup for somewhere else. It may not be mission-critical, but a good spot to have a backup generator to. Some ideas came across, I mean, the Friendship Center was an example of somewhere we could put that diesel generator, or maybe there's another spot. Just conversations. To that point, too, I've always also asked that the facilities director also look in dual fuel source. So, the parallel generator system, it is my desire to have one that's diesel and one that's natural gas, with full paralleling system. That way, if natural gas goes out, circa blackout 2004, or 2003, or anybody remember that? I do, I know the gas didn't work. Or if we have a fuel shortage, because it's a prolonged outage and diesel becomes scarce. So having a dual fuel source as well will also take another step to give you that one plus one redundancy. I hope I answered that question, didn't bore anybody else in the process.
Thank you, it was just very important that people understand that we do have two generators, and we're not just going to recycle it or throw it away, we're actually going to repurpose it and save some money over here by doing it. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
All set, Councilman? Councilwoman Ballmer.
I know this is approval to appropriate the funds, since we need to do that in 2024 anyway. What is the timeline of this particular project and process with the bidding and everything? What are we looking at, trying to have it be done by?
Council President, I did talk to the purchasing director today. You want me to field that question? Mayor, do you want me to field one?
The administration want to take that, or?
Mayor's giving me permission to speak on behalf of the...
Go ahead.
So I did talk to Devin Adams today, the purchasing director, so Wolverine Power's going to be coming out in the next, once this gets appropriated, we have to appropriate these funds naturally. But Wolverine is already on standby to come out and go ahead and tap our main transformer. So what happens is when they tap our main transformer, they're going to go ahead and get a week-long historical use, and this is the perfect time to, we still have weather, right? We still have warmth, and so what you want to do is you want to get your maximum usage. What's coming through that transformer? What's our actual consumption? So, that's step one, is to figure out exactly what our draw is. Now, you don't want your generator to ever be less than, excuse me, you want your draw to be no more than 70% of your generator capability, okay? So if the building is using 500 KVA, you want to multiply that by 1.25, so you know what your single generator load is. In order for us to really drill down, we have to know what our draw is over a week, and that's using everything. And the only way we can tap that is through the transformer out back. So Wolverine Power, according to, you know, Devin Adams today, which I talked to, is on the hook, they're ready to go, to come out and go ahead and put CTAPs on our transformers and monitor our consumption, so that we can go ahead and get a baseline of what the power system is and what our needs are.
Yeah, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Then it was the next step for bidding, and that timeline as well, like, so, I mean, because, you know, for the residents, I want them to know when we're foreseeing that we would actually have these running and have that protection we're talking about.
So, based off of the conversation I had with Devin Adams, we're looking at about a week to go ahead and get, once this is approved, and once Wolverine comes out, okay? So once they get out, I doubt it'll be tomorrow, you know, but once they come out, we have about a week for them to go ahead and get their baseline. After that, we're going to have to use that baseline and go ahead and provide it to an engineering firm, okay? Like, insert your electrical engineering firm here, I won't go ahead and throw their names out. They're going to have to go ahead and come up with a design and scope. That's going to take about three to four weeks, according to Devin Adams, all right? Then we're going to have about four weeks of scoping, we're going to have to put an RFP out based off of that. So if you have my honest to God, based off of what I've heard, you're at about 90 days before we'll have bids back, and then we can take the next step.
Okay, all set, Councilwoman? Yes, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Hart, for your work on this. I am not a generator expert, so a lot of this is like, way over my head, but I do know that generators may last, I don't know, 10, 15 years. Do you know, I just wanted to know if you could speak a little bit more about the investment of $650,000, how much life does this give us?
It all depends on your use and your load, okay? And your maintenance program. You know, a poorly maintained generator will last five years. A very good maintained generator will last about 20, all right? On average. You can stretch them to 25. But don't forget, too, that there's things that happen as we, I mean, 20 years ago, a generator was nowhere near as efficient as they are today, okay? So there are efficiencies that come with evolution and technology. But I will tell you, off the cuff, you can bank for about, a well-maintained generator for about 20 years of life expectancy before you look to start to replace it, on average.
Okay, yeah, that's fair enough. I mean, that's a pretty big amount. And again, like I said, I don't know anything about generators, so perhaps that is standard and cost, but I was just curious to see, in your professional opinion, what we're looking at for the generator life. So, thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that.
Any additional discussion from the council? I do have a couple of points here, just real quick. Number one, thank you to the Subcommittee that I've been a part of, Councilwoman Rakowski, Councilman Hornbuckle. Thank you to my colleague, Councilman Hart, for really spearheading this project. This is not something I think that was really on any of our radars, is like, a need. And, you know, to the residents out there, sometimes you have to do things that aren't always, you know, the sexiest project or something that you can directly see the benefit from right away, but I'm telling you, as he has, you know, really drilled into us, if power goes out here and our systems go down here, whether it's IT, phone systems, any of that, you will see that, and it will not be a pretty sight. So thank you for spearheading this initiative. Thank you to the mayor's office, Director Awadi, Director Adams as well, but I appreciate my colleague, Councilman Hart, taking the lead on this. Thank you for that. With that, is there any additional discussion? Yes, Councilman Wishart.
Is it $650,000 enough? Just doing some quick Google searching, it looks a little light for two generators.
Thank you, Councilman Wishart, for the question. So right now, it is either appropriate or inappropriate based off of two things. There's two factors. Factor is, what does our median draw off the transformer? We don't know. So we kind of had to take a little bit of a swag on that, okay? But I wanted to get the ball rolling, and I've communicated that to the Subcommittee. It goes, we have to allocate some money so we can start our engineering piece of it, okay? Right now, we don't know what we don't know. We know we need a system. We don't know how big it is, okay? The other unknown right now is what it's going to take to right-size our electrical infrastructure here in City Hall. Again, we have two separate transformers that are off of the big transformer, and trying to realize what it's going to take to bring that into a centralized switchgear, all right? So that's the other piece. So the first piece is, let's get this data so that we can come back and say, hey, we're good at 650, or hey, we're a little light here. And we'll know that once we get the RFP out there, and then the scopes come back, and then the council will be able to take another good look at that and figure out, okay, these are the next steps. But we have to let an electrical engineer go ahead and tell us really what has to be done in order for us to get to the desired result we're trying to get to. I apologize. Through the chair.
All set. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent?
Council President?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. So you're aware, on both items six and eight, there should be a correction in the resolution that Councilwoman Bowman pointed out. It refers to the Parks and Rec Department, and it should actually refer to the project that's being completed. Like, on item six, it's the City Hall Generator Project, and then on item eight, it should say the secondary core switch purchase. So both of those, just so councilors are aware, should be corrected in the resolution. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Smith. Appreciate it. And is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item seven. Adoption of Prepared Resolution authorizing the reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds toward public broadband infrastructure in an amount not to exceed $150,434.45.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski.
Supported.
Supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yes, please. Okay. Good evening again. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. So what this proposal is about is reallocating funds that were originally allocated to provide broadband service at our park facilities. Last year, you may recall that it was piloted at the newest park in the city, at the Dog Park, and many people got a little chuckle out of dogs using Wi-Fi. But nonetheless, we found that at this time, that's a project in scope that would far exceed this amount and would be not providing enough benefit for the public at large to really be utilizing that money. So what we're proposing to do today is take this $150,434.45 and 45 cents and put it back into the ARPA pot, so to speak, the ARPA fund, so that it can be re-appropriated to a more reasonable endeavor. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it, Councilwoman. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item eight. Adoption of Prepared Resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of a secondary core switch in an amount not to exceed $110,000.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there a discussion from the maker?
With the ARPA Subcommittee Chair permission. Very good. So this was the other initiative I put... I didn't put together fun stuff. I put together necessary stuff. I'm an infrastructure guy, if you can't figure it out. So as I said before, this is our data center. This is our centrally controlled location. So everything comes in, and at the risk of getting a deep dive on IT, an IP, you know, IP stack, we have a core router here. The core router is the brain, you know, the big dog, the one that controls everything. Our core router, we have one. One. Everywhere else in IT or businesses of any scale, they always run something called a two-plus-o. You have a working and a protect. That means if the working cooks off, the protect takes over. Without having a backup, if our working core router goes bad, which I've seen happen before, it's not a good site, we will be down for a week to two. And we'd still have to spend this money anyway to fix it, all right? Actually, more, because we'd have to hire an emergency company to come out and go ahead and do the rec out and replace everything out, plus all of the emergency backup and everything else. So our entire city would be down, oh my goodness, almost two weeks. So what this does is it kind of right sizes us for the size of the community that we are and how much data we put through and how data-centric we're becoming as a city, which is good. This gives us a backup router. So what happens is this thing is actually plugged in, turned on, has the entire backup configuration for the primary core router. In case the primary core router goes bad, it goes, I went bad. The backup goes, gotcha. And it picks up and it runs right along. And then Craig Brown rubs his eyes at about 2:00 in the morning, goes, oh, wow, things went bad, but everything's taken care of. I'll be in at 8:00 in the morning, we'll figure it out. Or if the mayor makes him come in earlier, that might be the mayor's call. But this is necessary. If this goes down, we lose our internet to all of our outside buildings, just like I talked about earlier with the power. So our power was our first critical exposure. The backup core router is our secondary core exposure. So it's been my goal to be sure that, from an infrastructure perspective, that the city is protected from core failure and being able to operate when things go bad, because it's been my career to always figure out when things go bad and how to mitigate that risk. So this is mitigating that risk, putting a core router in place. Someone asked me, I talked to Craig Brown, what the life expectancy is of our core routers right now, what if their utilization? We're at probably about 10 to 15 years for our core router infrastructure. Thankfully, we bought this new router, what, last year, I think we bought it? So this is common off-the-shelf, this current technology, so it's not going to be EOL, which means end-of-life anytime soon. So we'll be able to have this other router up and running and backing up in case anything goes bad. And that's good for us. I'll take any other tech questions. I don't want to steal Director Brown's thunder, but he had something else going on today. But this is something that I pushed for. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Hornbuckle, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to echo basically what Jim said. You know, this is kind of a no-brainer. I'm going to say, a data center this size that connects so many buildings, so many environments, the data that flows through here, it's important to be up as close to 99 dot 9999. If you understand what that means, we need to be up all the time. And by having this extra core switch router, it gives them a moment to actually update this one to protect us, protect our data from cyber attacks. Without being able to take the router down for a moment to patch it, to update it, you know, we're missing a very, very fundamental practice that you need just to protect your environment. So having this not only keeps, if one fails, we got the other one up, but give them a moment to take it down, to patch it, to update it, make sure it's secure, and keep the city working. So this is definitely a no-brainer for me. I definitely 100% support this, and thank you for bringing this to the table.
Any councilman? Councilwoman Bowman?
Through the chair, I just, I know sometimes the use of the ARPA funds is always a question. Like, are we actually, are we being responsible with the funds? So I guess, could, maybe someone from the committee speak to just the fact that even though this is not a highly visible or really pretty use of it, how important this is and how this does qualify as being a responsible use of the ARPA funds? Somebody can speak to that?
Yeah, cool. Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. I'd be happy to answer that for you. First of all, Councilmember Hornbuckle is on the committee, and I think he gave a pretty good explanation, but we can boil it all down to safety. It's a way of keeping us all secure and all of our data secure and, you know, maintain what we need to, to be able to function as a city on a day-to-day basis barring any catastrophe. So, yes, it's not flashy. Nope, you can't take your kids to it, but when you need to access records or you need to, you know, in the case of the generator, dial 911 because there's an emergency and everybody's power's out, we can still get, you know, our emergency services to you. So, yeah, it's a safety item at the end of the day.
Thank you. I just was just, because, you know, not everyone looks up what can ARPA funds be used for, and obviously, infrastructure is a critical piece that they can be used for. So I was just really more speaking to that more, the part that this is one of the, I don't know, handful of categories that is...
Yes, so you could, yes.
That's all, just more for residents, in case a question comes up of like, you know, why aren't we seeing them? So I just want to help.
Yeah, so you can tie that under infrastructure. It is 100% approved use of the funds, and then you can parlay that into the health and safety of all of the residents in the city.
All right. Councilman Wishart.
So we're buying a backup course, which I believe we should absolutely have. Where's this going to be located? Because if we're talking about emergency backup, for security, having two in the same building doesn't seem like the best move sometimes.
I would say we shouldn't be having that.
And Councilman Hart, did you want to?
Through the chair. I have talked to the IT director. Right now, we do house everything here at City Hall. We don't have off-site data center storage. We do have the opportunity, but we don't use it. And part of that is the sensitive nature of our IT department wants to be able to get to our core router whenever... Lack of a better word, sometimes the best way to protect your core router from a brute force attack is to unplug it, okay? And not plug the power, but unplug your uplink. And that does happen. That is part of the steps of the protocol. And for people who don't realize, the number-one targets for brute force attacks and, you know, cybersecurity threats are municipalities, hospitals, and large businesses. And municipalities are becoming number one, okay? So having those here means that our IT department is here onsite to be able to go ahead and mitigate threats and being able to mitigate them from a physical level if needed. Now, to answer your question about actual physical location, there are two locations here in the building that we can store our data center items, and I'm talking with Craig Brown right now, and he thinks he might be able to put this in another climate-controlled location within the building. So not in the same room, but within the building in another spot. So he hasn't got back to me with yet on that, but I think at that point, if a tornado takes out the building, Councilman Wishart, I think the tornado taking out the building's the least of my worries at that time, you know? So, or the router, that is, you know? I think we got bigger issues at that point.
All set. Councilman Hornbuckle.
I just wanted to add something to that, if that's okay. This is a core router, so this moves packets really fast, and it's really hard to put a core router in another location, but what's important is to have two routers, two different power sources, you know? So you don't have them the same breaker, so if the breaker go down, you know, this one falls off, but this one comes up. But to put them in two different locations would be hard, but we could look at maybe later on having a disaster recovery site where we have everything at. But for the core routers, they have to be close to each other for that heartbeat to sync up.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yep.
I actually have a question. So I got a two-parter. When I think, and I hear the word "switch," because my mom was a project manager for AT&amp;T and Bell Labs, I think of like cell site switches where it's weeks, if not months, of headache in installation. This is, it seems like something Director Brown and his team can handle on their own, right? And get done in a reasonable amount of time?
I talked to Director Brown. There are some professional services that we'll need from Cisco. It's a Cisco ASR 9000, I believe. So there are some professional services that are going to come in to help them script. I think our IT department is very good, but none of our IT guys are CCIEs, okay? That's a $400,000-a-year job. At some point, when you have a router that big, you got to have a CCIE. So being able to bring in a CCIE, there are some professional services to stand it up, but once they stand up, those configs are pulled down and backed up and archived. So that way, if the one is either working or the redundant router goes bad after that point, it's just plugging a new one in when we get it, pushing the config, and it'll stand back up again. Does that answer your question, Council President?
It does, yes. Thank you. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. All right. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone wishing to speak before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my left? Yes. Miss Sullivan.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Sullivan, the Westland Historic Society. Just wanted to remind everybody that on Saturday, September 28th, we'll be having our All About Eloise lecture presentation. It's about the asylum. It's about the museum. It's being put on by Jeff Kozlowski, who was a former commissioner and an all-around expert of Eloise, who helped put together our museum, the Eloise artifacts. 1:00 at the Row House at Westland Historic Village Park, which is located at 857 North Wayne Road between Cherry Hill and Marquette, and will be holding it inside the Eloise Museum. So he'll be talking about the history and showing some of the artifacts. And in case no one knew, we have the world's largest amount of Eloise artifacts. Hope to see everyone there.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Is there anyone on my right? Public comment? Yes, sir.
Well, it's not a comment.
Well, if you want to come up to the, if it's a public comment, please come up to the lectern, sir.
Not a comment. I got a serious problem that I need to talk to the chief about, chief of police.
Okay.
Back in May 15th, my wife got scammed about $27,000. And I went and put a dispute on that claim. It was to PNC Bank. And we heard nothing, I mean, like, two straight months. Finally, like, July something, PNC Bank called me and says, money's gone. They wouldn't answer any questions for me, I mean, not one. So I go down to Co-America Bank, where I bank at, I had Co-America Bank reach out to PNC Bank, and they wouldn't answer other questions either. So two Mondays ago, I called the police department, and I left a message for detectives calling me. I was real polite. I got nothing. I called back on Thursday. I was still polite, nothing. I go there last Monday, and I left a message and still nothing. So, I, I talked to an attorney, and he told me that Westland Police has got to subpoena PNC Bank records. Well, Coimber America Bank told me that, she says, there's no guarantees, but once a bank gets their money, they consider their money and they're not going to give it back. She said, banks are common for that. So, the attorney said that Westland Police has got to subpoena PNC Bank records. So, that's, that's what I need done through the police department.
Sir, we'll have the chief talk to you afterwards, so that you guys are able to have more time than just the three minutes to discuss the situation. So, if you want to stick around, after the meeting, we'll have the chief talk to you about it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Judith Yates, and I'm here on behalf of Gosemone Missionary Baptist Church of Westland Summer Youth Program. Some of my program volunteers with me, and a couple of the young ladies who went through the program. We would like to personally thank you for funding our program this year. We were able to provide the youth with a very productive and fun summer. We got a chance to go to Lansing and tour the state capitol, and we fulfilled my vision of getting the kids to the Washington DC to see the US Capitol. We had a very good time and a very educational time. So, I just want to thank you again for your support to our program.
All right. And on my left, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Linda Filzetti. I spoke a couple of weeks ago, and I'm still here. I'm still looking around and trying to see how I can improve my neighborhood. For most of you that don't know me, or some of you do know me, I'm a transplant. I'm from UP, Upper Michigan. And it's really hard to stop comparing when you live 40 years of a new transplant down here. And I, I love my state, I love Michigan. I'm learning to love downstate. But I'm really confused to why we don't have sidewalks, why don't we have lights, why are my high school students in my area walking in the middle of the road? Why are there no lights? It's, it's the beginning of the year, it's starting to get dark out, it's dark out there right now, and there's no lights, majority of the streets in my area. I'm not afraid to tell you, I live right behind Jonglin High School. We know a couple of years ago that there was a young lady that was 15 years old that got hit. We know a few months before that or after that, a 12-year-old at a middle school got hit and was killed. From my understanding, the 15-year-old is still recovering from that. So, I'm asking you guys again as leaders, what can we do? My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we pay for lights, for streetlights out of our property taxes. I have no streetlights on Carl Street. Again, I'm not afraid to tell you guys, I live on Carl Street. There's not one single streetlight. And I know about seven students that walked down the middle of the road to get to high school. And they're cutting through the woods to get to the back end of it. But the majority of them are mowmuck right down the middle of the road because there's no sidewalks, there's no lights. And unfortunately, maybe the police officers need to take a look back there, but we have a lot of people that go flying down those side roads trying to get to school or trying to get to work, and it's just another incident waiting to happen. Allow you guys to give me time to speak to me, or if you have answers or solutions, something I missed.
We'll definitely have time for you after the meeting to talk about this, like we did last time regarding homelessness issue. So, please, if you're able to stay after, please do. So, I know a number of us will want to come and chat with you to.
Thank you for your time.
To talk about it, absolutely. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Ray.
You got to save the best for the last. But let's see, making sure you get this. And I'm talking, and you.
Thank you, Ray.
And there's some flower flyers that are out there on the thing. Unfortunately, I'm glad I did have these flower flyers, and I am definitely looking forward to this. And it's been years. I am so proud that I am living a life today, and how did I get there? And these other four, these other three are going to be talking too with different stories. It's about mental health. So, what is prioritizing everyone's mental health. So, it's important. That means all of us, police department, fire department. I will be driving out to fire department, one, two, two, three, and four, I think, and drop off a flyer. If one of them can make it, that would definitely be great. The police department's already got one from me already, and a couple of them said they're going to post it up on their bulletin board. And so, what it is, is tell them the story. So, how did we get here? Well, you're going to learn, that's what it's about, lunch and learn. We're going to have a conversation. The conversation is, we don't want to repeat the history, we want to continue where everyone is equal with mental health and living a life today. This is what it's all about. So, anyway, it's October 10th, mark your calendars, it's October 10th, 2024, from 11:30 to 1:00 PM. Early free lunch, wow. Levin's Cell, City Hall, 36300 Warren Road, Westland, Michigan. I will be posting this up on Facebook, too, and sending it to my friends and my work. So, therefore, it's, uh, Westland Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion. Well, back in my time, we didn't have equality and inclusion, what we do now. So, I hope you can attend and hear my story. How did I get there and why I'm living successful life today? And I want to thank the mayor, too, for having this. Thank you. So, anyway, that's pretty much is what, um, what does, also the registered for this event will be 734, 793, 9342, Equality Inclusion Department, I guess. So, anyway, I also studded a plan tonight, the master plan, five-year plan, throw them some ideals on there, too, was really good. Also, I am training 10 new peers this week, so Ray's always busy doing something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. We appreciate you as always. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes.
Ruth Dale. Ray is a hard act to follow, as they say. I didn't know I was going to be speaking on this, but I had time to think it over while you were holding your study session. So, good evening, everyone, Ruth Dale. With upcoming Eloise lecture that Sharon Sullivan just told you about, it made me aware that our museum complex does not have a meet, does not have a building for our historical commission or the society to hold lectures, meetings, et cetera. Historical has been on Wayne Road at that site for 45 years. The, it's a second museum site, actually, and the first museum was in the 1843 Miller's House on Ann Arbor Trail in Farmington. Other neighboring museums hold their meetings in their churches, you know, their 1880, whatever, their one-room schoolhouses. In Northville, they have the KDN to do this. Forty-five years. Just wanted to throw this out there. And David Carrick and I, a few years ago, had high hopes of utilizing the early 1930s bungalow for this purpose. But a tree limb, a giant tree limb took a, made a giant hole in the roof, animals, weather, and then mold followed the weather. It was not, I don't know what the right word is, it wasn't covered, it wasn't taken care of as it should have been. So, that's, it was torn down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak? All right, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to comments from the administration.
Thank you, City Council, thank you, everybody in attendance tonight. I hope everybody had a nice weekend. It seems like summer's holding on a little longer, and you're, hopefully, you're enjoying all the, the great weather. First of all, I'd like to send my condolences to the family of Pam Pro, who passed away recently. She was one of the owners of My Ladies Florists. She is very active in the community, and we'll all miss her very much. Next, I would like to thank the City Council for approving the contract to amend, the contract amendment for priority waste. This change will allow residents to place their bulk items on the curb biweekly, the week of your recycling pickup. I believe it'll make the city cleaner, it'll be more efficient, and fiscally responsible in the long term. So, I do appreciate council support on that. We've had some great events over the last couple of weeks. Want to thank everyone that attended and participated in the craft beer and wine event. A little chilly out there, but seems like most of the folks there had a good time. I saw a couple of council members there, it was good to see you. We also had Grandparents and Me Day, which was run by our Parks and Recreation Department. We had about 60 attendees. I stopped by, everybody was having a good time, so we appreciate all the participation in that as well. And a couple of events that are coming up tomorrow is my first-ever State of the City speech. This is going to be at the Soho Grand Banquet and Event Center. Doors open at 3:00 PM. And looking forward to sharing our vision for the, the future of the city and the accomplishments we've made so far. Also, our Fire Station 2 groundbreaking ceremony will be next week, Thursday, September 26th, at 11:00 AM. We're still working with all the parties involved to get our Naked and Square and Amphitheater groundbreaking scheduled. We're just holding up for one of the parties that, uh, that funded the, the project. So, you'll hear about that one soon, probably a little later in the fall, maybe towards October. And then, I'd like to mention that the Westland Fire Department is going to host their annual Fire Prevention Lunch on October 5th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Fire Station 1, which is right here, around the corner from us on City Hall, at, on Central City Boulevard here. And there'll be food, a bounce house, demonstration, tours of the fire station, and more. And then I wanted to congratulate Kids Purpose Learning Center. We had our Congresswoman, our state senator, and several officials in attendance for the opening of that event. Some of the funding from that came out of our state budget for programs for children in the community. And then, I just wanted to mention to the woman that brought up lighting, I'm going to give you our, our information to, to talk to our office. I know the council wanted to speak to you as well. Historically, there's been streets for decades that were built and not lit. There's been streets that were built without sidewalks. If there's problem areas, we do look at them. It's a budgetary consideration. But I'll give you one example. We had a resident bring up to us that there was a bus stop on, on Ann Arbor Trail this year. It wasn't lit, kids were standing in the dark every morning waiting for their bus. We worked with DTE and got a streetlight put there. So, if there are specific safety considerations, you know, we do look at that. But be happy to talk to you more, and thanks for coming to the council meeting. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the City Attorney's Office?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. We will begin council comments this evening with Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. Good evening. I actually didn't have a lot of things prepared, but I did want to say, I just came back from, I was, one of the things that, there's an organization called Michigan Municipal League, and they actually have conventions and different educational opportunities for elected officeholders and appointed officials from the cities and the, this was around the state. And Councilwoman Sampe and I, and the mayor, and W. Mayor, actually just went there last week, and, because we were elected as delegate, and I was alternate to go. And I, I counted up 10 pages. I, I write notes when I go to trainings. I have 10 pages from a two-and-a-half-day conference with all things that I, that I just, you know, was jotting down. And the two things, I guess, I just wanted to throw out that were really, I always like to do like a little takeaway, like what would be one thing I took away from this? And there were actually two things I took away, was their comments about placemaking and neighboring. And when I hear some of the comments that come from the, you know, residents, and whether here or other places, it's like, how do I feel, how do, how do I make my area feel like a home? How do I feel like I belong here? There's a lot of those comments. And there was a really important vibe through this conference, through, through the people they were bringing, talking about neighboring and placemaking, that, that people, for people to feel like they're at home when they're in their own cities and their communities. And specifically, the neighboring, one of the things that brought out of that, it was a smaller group, it was a gentleman from out of University of Missouri, the extension there. And he evaluated, he said, one of the questions he asked was how people feel that, you know, what's required to be a good neighbor? And basically, the, the thing was, keep, keep to yourself and give me my privacy makes a good neighbor. And then, he evaluated, they evaluated what people, like how people, how many people thought that they were good neighbors doing this, and everybody rated themselves high. And so, he said, well, what, what do you want from your neighbors? And they started listing all these things that did not include keeping to yourself or privacy. They really actually were more about the things of like what people can do. And so, he realized, he started evaluating his own self, and he realized, he's like, I'm not a good neighbor. And so, he started changing things, just one thing. And one of his stories was, he actually took, took some food over to someone's house, one item. And the, I think, I think it was this story, I may have got my stories a little mixed up, but basically, the neighbor, the person said, oh, my gosh, you are the best neighbor I've ever had. He's like, I've done nothing else for her, but I brought her food. And, and she, she was like, this is the best neighborhood I've ever lived in. And so, they've been doing more things. And so, one of the things that, you know, I, I just came out of that, one of the interesting things he said, he encouraged was to have more block parties. So, I think that's interesting, because I do know some people that have some block parties, and I, some friends of mine even, and I, I love to hear that people have block parties. But it was just, I want to encourage that I'm, I'm trying to get through this training that Michigan Municipal League offers to make the councilperson a better, you know, if you're serving your community, how can I be better? What can I do more? Well, I can learn more from others in other communities and others around the country and the state to do better. So, again, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to go, because that, that's really how I got there. If I wasn't here, I wouldn't have been able to go and attend this and get that education. So, again, I want to thank, that's really where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. I'm kind of sad the church left us, you know, because I wanted to, you know, that was really important for me to, to be able to see some young, young kids go to DC to experience that in life, you know? Not a lot of us, including myself, never been to DC, but to hear that some young kids were able to go there to experience that, that's, you know, that's important to me. And I was glad that you guys were able to experience that and enjoy that moment. The mayor forgot to talk about the street sweeping that started this week, so I wanted to make sure that you knew that this week, I think it started this week, was street sweeping. So, I wanted to make sure you knew that, you know, get your trash cans in as quick as you can, so they can sweep, and they won't have that weird-looking shape down your street. I'm excited about Pizza Palooza, that's one of my family favorite. It's a great night to spend with my family, have some good food, and, like you mentioned, be a good neighbor and be a part of the community here. So, come out and enjoy some different types of pizza as well. Also, um, that's really all I have this week. Thank you for getting the generator pass, thank you for getting the, the switch, that's definitely important, I didn't want to go too deep in the woods on that. But, um, thank you for getting that done, that would be great for the community and the city. And if you want to follow me on Facebook, Councilman Delano Hornbuckle, and I'll see you next month, October 7th. Thank you.
His family likes the Pizza Palooza because they win something every year, too.
I know. Always.
Hey, but we give it right back.
He always does, he always does. We will now hear from Councilwoman Wachowski.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President. I really have nothing to add this evening, I just, you know, I've been very busy with, you know, family and grieving losses, so I hope everyone has, you know, a peaceful upcoming weeks, and be kind, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo somewhat Mr. Hornbuckle's statement. I'm super envious that the youth group got to go to DC, it's something I wish I would have done, and I hope that we can redo that next year for them, or something along those lines for youth groups. Also, super excited that we're actually able to improve our infrastructure in our city. Long-term investments give long-term results, and I'm excited to see this. That's all I got.
Great, thank you, Councilman. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Couple of things, I usually don't get too long, but I'll be as brief as possible, you know me. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for supporting the ARPA allocations today for the router and the generator project. It's one of those things where if you do it, no one's going to know it. But if you don't do it and something happens, everybody's going to ask you why you didn't do it, okay? It's one of those things. It's, it's something that's a responsible thing to do. I'm glad everyone agrees with me, so I'd like to get this moving forward, so that long after I'm gone, it won't be a problem for about another, you know, in the future, and then they can deal with it. And hopefully, they do the same. As far as Gosemone Missionary Baptist Church, we were, I, I was really proud to go ahead and move that forward to get you guys funded for that. I'm really happy that Ms. Yates came back, and she left, but I, I want you to take a message back, so I want you to think about this, okay? So, we did allocate some money to send our youth, our future leaders, were those two ladies over there, our future leaders right there? I would love for them to go ahead and provide an essay or at least a spot on WLND, Mayor, if you can have the studios reach out to them. I think it'd be a good spot for them to do a little Q and A. So, for all the young leaders in our community have an opportunity to kind of get their feedback and what they experienced, so that we can share that with the entire city. So, they, they were, they were ambassadors for all of our young leaders, so if they can come back and share with some of the other young leaders, I think that would be a really good thing, and I'd like to see that. would be a really good thing, and I'd like to see that. So maybe, uh, reach out to the mayor's office. I think the mayor would be more than happy to accommodate you. Is that right? Is that a fair assumption, Mayor? Very good. Yep. Um, let's see, uh, holiday meals. Uh, so for those of you at home, the holiday meal, uh, program at, uh, Civic League is going well. We're up to 150, uh, people signed up so far. Uh, so that's going. So if you got your letter in the mail, please don't hesitate to get that back. Uh, if you didn't get a letter in the mail and you are a veteran here in the Wayne Westland community, please go to the website that has been put up all over the place. You can go ahead and get registered. And if you want to donate, you know, please do, uh, there is a donate link on that website, too, to go ahead and help sponsor a meal for a veteran this holiday. That'd be great. Uh, the last, the State of the City, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend tomorrow. Um, and Mayor, I would ask in the future, please, you know, it is tomorrow, it's at 3:00 o'clock. Uh, my, most of my colleagues, I think, and a lot of the residents here in the city of Westland have a regular work schedule. Uh, so a 3:00 p.m. kind of State of the City is a little bit difficult for all of us to get to, especially, you know, your elected officials here in the dais. Uh, so when we look at scheduling that into next year, maybe make it accessible to the rest of the council, especially the rest of the community, uh, so they can participate in that as well. That'd be much appreciated. Uh, thank you, Council President. Everybody, good evening.
Thank you, Councilmen. Protam.
Thank you. Um, I hope everyone's doing well. I know school's off to probably a great start. Um, I'm going to start with just a personal, a personal thing. I want to wish my son Gavin good luck. Um, he's advanced on to the homecoming court process. Um, so I'm very proud of him. He's understanding politics and he's going to be humbled. Um, but as a proud mom, uh, this is his senior year, so I wanted to celebrate with everyone, too, as I stated before, that this year's probably going to be a lot talking about him, but I'm a proud mom, so I'm, I'm able to, right? Um, I want to thank Ray for my button. Um, clapping. Thank you so much. Uh, this, the button says, "Labels are for cans, not people."
Very popular, Ray.
It's very popular. Yeah. Well, maybe you should give those out, Ray, right? To everybody? Yeah. I think, I think everyone will wear them. Um, so thank you, Ray, too, for sharing this. Um, October 10th, Ray is doing a lunchtime conversation. So, um, prioritizing everyone's mental health. Thank you for sharing this. I'm going to try to connect with Director Azay about this as we discussed. I also wanted to highlight, as shared with the council, that DTE will be holding a community engagement open house at the Friendship Center. This is going to take place on Tuesday, October 24th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. I know that we had brought this up, I think, at the last meeting, and it was basically of, an overview of what to expect, but there'll be individuals there from DTE, various departments, so you can bring your questions, um, everything from billing to why does a power go out? So I would encourage you to attend. Again, that is October 24th, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Friendship Center. Council President and myself, this is something that we talk about probably every meeting, if not every other, a lot. So I really, really, really hope that people can join us. Um, I'm going to try to make it through this. I'm probably not going to get emotional, but I may. September is Suicide Prevention Month. Um, over the past year, I've lost two people to suicide, and, um, it, it's hard to talk about it, but I think that talking about suicide and talking about mental health is so important. It's not always about individuals that are dealing with problems that they may share. It's about the individuals that are battling that stigma, that they want to keep it inside. And really, the, the rates of suicide are, are, are rising among our youth, um, adults. I, I bet you know someone right now that's struggling, and they're probably struggling in silence. So I wanted to bring this to the forefront, just to remind you that, um, be kind and have grace every day. And, you know, just know that people out there are here to listen. Um, there is a number that you can call, 988. Um, it's the National Suicide Prevention Hotline. And, um, again, I mean, it's a stigma that people suffer with. It's something, I think, after COVID that more people suffer with. And it's, it's hard to talk about, like I stated, but call, call your friends, call your family, just check on them. So I think that if we can call and check on people and just know that they, they may be having a hard day, it might, it might save a life. So I wanted to put that out there because I, I do feel that, um, you know, we don't talk about mental health enough, and it's something that I'm really passionate about. Um, I wanted to give, on a positive note, uh, hats off to Rosies. So I attended the tea luncheon fundraiser with a few of my colleagues that were there. It was a fabulous event. I wish that I would have attended, uh, years prior because I had the best time. Um, I wanted to thank my, my colleagues and the clerk for your donation. So the City Council provided some donation baskets. I think they went over really well. Um, but it was a fantastic event. It was organized by the Norway Community Citizens Council, and they, they did a fantastic job. So I would encourage you, if you see this next year around this time, please attend. It was a great time. I think Mayor did plug, uh, the annual Craft Beer and Wine Festival, which was a great time. And then I, I also wanted to thank my colleagues for allowing me to attend the Michigan Municipal League. I know that we talked about it already, but, um, it was a great, 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 um, event. It allows you to network, but it also allows you to discuss ideas. And the main theme, what I took away from it was placemaking, which allows us to figure out places and opportunities to make you feel like you're at home and make you feel where you can connect. So, you know, I, I look forward to maybe discussing a little bit more with our council colleagues and some ideas that I had. And lastly, one very big announcement. Um, I recently worked with the mayor's office, um, and I wanted to actually thank my colleague, um, colleague Wishart, Councilman Wishart, who brought this to my attention. But we recently had created a partnership with Living and Learning Enrichment Center. As you guys know, I talk about individuals that, um, may be battling with, um, you know, not, I don't want to say disability. We always say differently abled. Um, and the program is really designed and allows individuals to work on task-driven work. Um, it allows them to have rewarding experiences, to do daily tasks, but also those around them, too. So I wanted to, like I said, thank my colleague. I wanted to thank the mayor for, for having a conversation with me and supporting this initiative. It was super important to me, and I think that it's important for the city to embrace and allow opportunity for those. It is a, um, a no cost to the city, so it doesn't take away jobs, but it allows individuals to come in. Uh, we have placement right now, I believe, at City Hall, Friendship Center, golf course, and Ice Arena. We're going to rotate through based on need, but, um, the Chief Human Resources Offer, Officer Stephanie Field, she worked on this. And then the Living and Learning, um, founder, Rochelle Vartarian, came in and talked with us, too. So again, I, this is a great rewarding experience for Wesleyan. We're, we're starting, I think, on a good note with them because they don't have many municipalities that have jumped on. So thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone involved, because again, it, it means a lot to me. Um, just from a, a last-minute comment, also to thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for sharing on, on the September 28th event. If you get us graphics, we'll share it, too. I think you guys might have posted, but I'll have to share that on my page. Um, I know that we did discuss, uh, about the lights, so I'll stick around on that. Um, Linda, for you. And then for the church, thank you so much for giving an update. I think it's a fantastic idea, Councilman Hart, for having, um, a little recap. It's always good to share those stories. So I think that's it for me. Um, our next meeting, as stated, is the 7th, so thank you for the reminder. We're done in September. So now we go to October 7th, uh, 7:00 p.m. Again, be safe and kind with each other, and we'll see you on the 7th.
Thank you, Protam. Sampe. Um, first off, I want to start out by thanking, on a couple of agenda items, my colleagues in the mayor's office. Um, number one, the, um, priority waste thing. Thank you to Paul Worthenberg. Thank you to the mayor's office. Thank you to my colleagues for all supporting that. I think it's important, uh, to be able to add services that are a net value to you all as residents and will help improve your quality of life without having to raise your taxes. And we were able to do that tonight and improve the bulk pickup service, um, for you and make it a more accessible service and easier to utilize, so you don't have to call in or go online or, uh, worry about when your bulk item is going to get picked up. Now we know it's on the day for your recycling. So unlike the previous leaf pickup program, this is something that everybody is going to have access to versus leaf pickup where, you know, HOAs in certain neighborhoods didn't have access to it. Um, so now more residents in the city will have access to this. So thank you to all of my colleagues for supporting that, for the mayor and the administration for, you know, making that initiative happen. Uh, very much appreciate that. Another item, and this may seem trivial to some, and I am not of native or indigenous heritage, not a drop in me, but I think it is critically important to acknowledge the plight that our indigenous brothers and sisters in this country went through. And I really want to thank my colleagues and the administration for supporting the Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution that was on the agenda. Um, I'm going to post it on my Facebook page at Councilman Mike McDermott, so I'm not going to sit here and read the whole thing, because I know we want to get out of here. But thank you all very much. It was a, a long time coming for that, and I'm very proud that we can now not only acknowledge Columbus Day here in the city of Westland, but also acknowledge our native brothers and sisters here in Westland across the state and across the country. Because what happened to, to native and indigenous people? The, the genocide that occurred to them was really a, a, a tragedy. And, um, to, to be able to acknowledge not only that, but acknowledge the contributions of Native Americans and indigenous Americans and all that they have contributed and all that they, uh, built before, uh, colonists and settlers were here. I'm really thankful that we were able to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day here, um, in the city of Westland. So thank you for that. Um, so glad to get the update from the, uh, kids at the Gethsemane trip to Washington, DC. I had the chance to go to DC when I was younger, and it's a really enriching and, and learning experience. So we are so glad, I think, all of us to see that they had such a great experience and that we were able to, you know, make that happen. Um, so thank you for coming and sharing that. It's very, uh, very appreciative of that. And, uh, as my colleague suggested, I think it's a great idea to have something on WLND. Um, it was not mentioned tonight, so I will mention this. The Norway Community Citizens Council is having their annual Norway Harvest Fest. That's going to be coming up on Saturday, October the 19th, at 11:00 a.m. The Harvest Fest is free to everyone in the community and beyond. It is not just a Norway event. So bring your family, bring the kids out. They have pumpkin painting, they do pony rides, they have great food, walking tacos, cider, donuts. Um, you know, if they want to come up dressed as a costume, that's great. We always love seeing the great costumes. Candy is being handed out by, you know, many different groups, elected officials, uh,